Test one, two. Test one, two.
Welcome, everybody. The school board meeting tonight. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Roll call, I believe we're all here. I'll take a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dennis. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor? Aye, the motion passes. I'll take, if everyone reviewed the meeting minutes and executive session minutes from October 6, 2025, anyone have any questions or comments on those meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve those meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Dawn. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor? Aye. Announcements. We have the New York State School Board Association Champions of Change Recognition, Family Support Center.
And I would turn things over to trustee Andrews for some more information on this, but while she's heading to the screen, I would ask her Family Support Center team to join her up here. She's going to read some information. We'll offer our congratulations, and then we're going to have the rest of the board come over to join us at the screen.
Good evening. It is an honor to be here tonight representing New York State School Boards Association Awards and Recognition Committee. Tonight, we celebrate the very best in educational innovation and community partnership. The New York State School Boards Association, NISBA Champions of Change Award, is reserved for those who have demonstrated extraordinary commitment, vision, and effort in transforming the schools and by extension, the lives of their students and families. It recognizes organizations that don't just solve problems, but fundamentally change the way things are done for the better. This year, the choice was clear, and on behalf of NISBA, President Sandy Ruffo and Executive Director Bob Schneider, I couldn't be more thrilled to announce that the recipient of the NISBA Champion of Change Award is the Clarence School Family Support Center, led by Coordinator Evan Verration, Social Worker Penny Connors, and Secretary Cheryl Weiss. In education, we often talk about the whole child, but what the team at Clarence has demonstrated is a profound understanding of the whole family. They recognized a critical need within their community, that a student's success isn't just what happens inside the classroom, but it is also linked to the well-being and stability of their home life. The Family Support Center is not merely a resource, it is a lifeline. It is a space built on empathy, trust, and a deep-seated belief that every single family in the Clarence School District deserves to thrive. In a world that can sometimes feel fragmented, the Clarence Schools Family Support Center has forged a truly integrated approach. They've gone beyond traditional boundaries, providing comprehensive services ranging from mental health support and counseling to basic needs assistance like food and clothing, and even offering parent education and referral services. Headlamp hikes at the nature center, art therapy programs, student-led podcasts, and spring into reading literacy events are just a few of the fun community events that they have provided. By making these resources accessible right within the school system, they've reduced barriers and stigma, ensuring that help is not just available, but actively utilized. The center has become the essential bridge between the school building and the home. The results speak for themselves. Families are more engaged, students are better supported, and the entire community has grown stronger and more resilient. This is the very definition of a champion of change. To the dedicated staff, the tireless volunteers, the visionary school board, and the courageous families of the Clarence Schools Family Support Center, thank you. Your work is a powerful reminder to all of us across New York State that the school district must be the center of the community, not just a collection of classrooms. You have shown us that by tending to the foundation needs of families, we build a more stable ground for every student's academic and personal growth. You haven't just adapted to change, you've driven it. You've set a standard for what it truly means to support the community that you serve. It is with immense respect, pride, and heartfelt gratitude that I present the NISBA Champions of Change Award to the Clarence Schools Family Support Center. Congratulations on this well-deserved recognition, and I would ask the board and those in attendance to join me in congratulating and applauding the students, staff, and administration for this great honor.
Why don't we have the members of our board and chief of management and the president of the board to get a little bit of that. You lost your shoe. We need that. We need to put the shoe on. Get the shoe back. Look at the mom and me. I'm like, grab that shoe, put the shoe on. All right. We're going to have to run it into a diagonal road. Move to the left. I'll get that shoe on. I know. All right, one more round of applause. Like, what are you ladies? I'm having a meeting. She's not going to get up though. Moving on to correspondence. We did receive correspondence regarding technology at the middle school, and I believe that was it. Moving on to unfinished business, we don't have any unfinished business, I'm aware, and now on to board reports. So we'll start with the New York State School Board Association Convention 2025. Who would like to give a report on that?
I could start.
Thank you, Dennis.
One program I went to I thought was very interesting was about the electric school bus and a pilot program at one district. This district worked with the Wendell Company, which did the feasibility study, and to be eligible for the grants that are available, you need to do that. They are also serviced by National Grid. This district is 15 square miles and all of it is flat, so all of their routes could be handled by an electric bus. Some people in the audience said their district, actually, none of the routes could be handled by electric bus because of the elevation that they have. This district did their transition recently, redid their transportation center, and they have 68 buses, although they are parked outside. Now with the successful grants, they would be able in two years to purchase 11 electric buses, which is about 16% of their fleet. I congratulated them on their efforts, but I had some questions. You know, they're one of 700 school districts in New York State, and it is estimated that 50,000 electric buses would need to be purchased in the next 10 years to meet this mandate. So I posed a question to the speakers on the panel, if every power company that services each school district could supply the infrastructure, the charging stations and everything, and if every school district could raise the money with voter approval to purchase all these charging stations, retrofitting their facilities, et cetera, could the bus companies supply 50,000 buses over the next decade? And there was a long pause, and then they said, we don't know. I think I know. And, yeah, we all do. And so it's a big concern for all of us. I know especially our Erie County Associated School Boards, the Legislative Committee is working very hard on this. So good information, but a lot to ponder as we move forward.
Thank you, Dennis.
Sure.
I'll go next. At the convention, two presentations that stuck out to me were in the areas of special education and enrichment education. I attended one of the first sessions on autism, and the session was presented by the Institute for Learning-Centered Education. They provided 20 tips for addressing the needs of people on the spectrum. It was a very informative session. And then the second was on a junior seal of biliteracy program, which was presented by the Vestal Central School District. They actually have their biliteracy programs start in elementary, and they start it with a fifth-grade passport project, which was super cool. The fifth grader would receive a certificate. Then at the eighth grade level, because then the students are already taking the language, they add additional projects, and in addition to the language, they have to complete multiple projects, and then they get this really cool middle school field of biliteracy. So that to me, I don't know, it was a very interesting take and concept and adding literacy in the earlier level, so I thought maybe we should take a look at that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Dawn.
I attended one that was called More Than Wins and Losses: Fostering Respect and Integrity in Student Athletics. It talked mostly about the importance of sportsmanship in school athletics. For students, it builds character, respect, and self-discipline. For teams, creates a positive supportive culture, communities, provides pride in school spirit. Sportsmanship matters now more than ever because there are increasing incidents of challenging behavior among students. There's increasing crease in taunting and disrespectful officials. There's lack of officials these days. It talked about the role of school boards should have in sportsmanship. Basically, it talked about policy development, establishing clear expectations for behavior and conduct, aligning athletic programs with our district values, and supporting our leadership and providing resources for training athletic directors and coaches.
And I attended a few sessions on AI. One of them that really stuck out was a session that was discussing embracing the full potential of AI in education. The discussions were focused on developing clear and actionable AI policies to build trust, protect academic integrity, and create a school community where students, teachers, and families work together as AI is unrolled. Some of the topics that were highlighted included equity, to make sure that all students have equal access and resources available, and equal opportunities there. Data privacy, making sure students' information is always protected. Personalized learning was also highlighted, making sure that, highlighting where AI is used to tailor educational experiences to individual student needs. And then, of course, teacher support, making sure that teachers have the necessary tools for effective AI integration.
Thank you very much. Moving on, CSEF.
We didn't have a meeting, but we did have our fall fiesta, so I'd like to thank everyone who attended that fundraiser, and we're currently in the middle of our gift card calendar fundraiser. But other than that, that's all I have to report on CSEF.
Thank you, Dawn. PTO meetings. Who's attended a PTO meeting?
I have attended one. I attended the Harris, actually, I didn't, take that back. I didn't attend the Harris Hill PTO meeting, but I was provided with some notes. I was at the dinner with the Commissioner of Education on October 7th, therefore I couldn't attend. But Harris Hill held its first annual trunk-or-treat on October 17th. It was a very successful event. This was an idea from their top dog student leaders from last year, so they were excited about having something that came from students and following through on that. The Halloween Parade will be this Friday, and it starts at 8:30. There's a special thank you to Pesci's Pizza. Harris Hill was the organization of the month of September, and they received $450 in donation, plus Pesci's gave each child a $10 gift card, so I thought that was very nice and very generous of Pesci's. Kindergarten is going on an Explore and More field trip. Mrs. Devoe is taking the third graders to the BPO. Mr. Gretsch is taking the fifth graders to the Darwin House. They're talking about upcoming fundraisers, possibly being a parents' bingo night out event. The book fair went very well, and their big news is they ordered a new Husky costume has arrived, and I got the privilege to see that, and it's really kind of really cool. So they're looking to unveil that soon.
Thank you. Who else? Mike?
A couple weeks ago, I attended the Clarence Middle School PTO meeting. I mean, generally speaking, a lot of organizational topics relative to upcoming events, a lot of the same activities and functions that they help support and coordinate like they have in years prior, such as Makers Mark and the like. But one thing, I guess, that was mentioned, which was shared with the PTO by Mr. Travelbus, which I thought was interesting, was the librarian has been tracking the number of books that get signed out every month, and in the two preceding school years, in the month of September, roughly 420 or so books had been signed out of the library. This year, with the changes in the cell phone policy, there was over 600 books signed out in the month of September. So one month certainly is only one data point, it's not a trend, but it was very interesting to see that.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone else?
Yes. I attended the high school PTO meeting last week. It was really well-attended, which was so reassuring to the officers, as most of them are moving out of the high school next year when their children graduate. So it was wonderful to see so many people there. It was the biggest PTO meeting attendance I've seen at the high school. There was a representative from CSEF there, and there was a productive conversation about collaborating on a possible fundraiser for post-prom, a CSEF slash post-prom fundraiser. So that's in the works, but I won't talk about specifics yet until they are finalized. They had a successful trunk-or-treat last week, which I think they opened theirs to the community as well, so little kids come and trick-or-treat, and it was very successful. And then just lots of talk of post-prom because they have to start fundraising now, so look for those. So look for those emails, look for the PTO updates on the Facebook page, talking about how you can get involved and begin to support that really important event at the end of the year.
Thank you, Adrian. Anyone else?
Oh, I have to talk about the wellness committee, but I don't know if I do that now.
Not yet.
Not yet. Sorry.
Any other PTO meetings? Carrying on, we'll go to Erie County Association of School Board Representatives.
I don't have a meeting to report on, but I did want to welcome Dave Lowery from Erie County School Boards who's attending our meeting today, so welcome, Dave.
I just mentioned Trish and I went to the Rick Tims Dinner on October sixteenth. He's always gives a very interesting presentation. He actually sat at our table, we were able to pick his brain a little during dinner as well. But the one big takeaway he mentioned is the outlook for state funding in the future is not rosy at all. He said the state is looking at a possible thirty-four billion, that's with the B deficit over the next three years, so we'll have to do our work to help us out.
Superintendent's Report. Dr. Frame.
Thank you, President Bhaglioli. We have four different items on the agenda tonight, a school board recognition report, public hearing for district-wide safety team plan, a presentation on our strategic plan that's connected with our school resource officer team, and then our student body update. I did just want to make a quick comment about the NISBA convention in New York City. I had a chance to travel with our four team members that were there and spend time with folks from NISBA and school board members from around the state. If I were to highlight one thing, it would be from the opening keynote that was given by Tim Schreiber, who is probably a familiar name for people in addition to being connected to some very prominent families in American history and American politics, also is somebody who's been very involved in the Special Olympics. Anyway, he gave a very engaging keynote address, and one of the key concepts that he was talking about was the fact that we in many ways live in a society that is wired for conflict, and talked about things like media, and talked about things like politics, and that we have algorithms and rewards for getting people upset and getting people to be angry with one another. And he introduced the concept of a dignity index, where it's really getting at how do we respond and how do we speak to people during moments of conflict when we disagree with them? And so he gave a really thoughtful talk, some very interesting activities that came with it, but as I was flying back, I couldn't help but reflect on the fact that it was a really important and a really substantive talk for school board members, because when we think about elected officials, oftentimes there is this tendency to pit one against another, and when you run for school board service, you are elected, but we have to figure out how to work together and put student interests first. And so a really interesting talk, but I think about the modeling that happens with our governance team and with school board officials from around the state, and just really proud of the group we have here in Clarence, and really proud of the work that school board officials do. With that, as a bit of lead-in, I wanted to read something about school board recognition. There's a specific week in October that's set aside by NISBA to recognize school volunteers for their board service. So I am going to read this word for word, I'm quite fond of this group and want to make sure that I get it right, and then I'll share a gift that was given by our PTO teams. So tonight, we recognize a group of individuals who take on one of the most important civic responsibilities in any community, serving on a board of education. School board members help guide public schools, ensure they stay strong and responsive to the needs of families, and keep students at the center of every decision. What makes this service especially meaningful is that it's voluntary. Board members give many hours each week, all without compensation, simply because they care deeply about children and believe in the power of public education. Across New York State, school board members collectively oversee nearly two-point-two million students and more than eighty-six million in budgeted spending. Their work setting direction, ensuring accountability for results, supporting a healthy school culture, and developing responsible budgets is all carried out with one primary goal: student success. Those same commitments are reflected here in our own community. Our board members help shape the vision for our schools, partner with us to strengthen student learning, and make thoughtful decisions that benefit our students, staff, and families. On behalf of our entire school community, thank you for your leadership, your time, and your dedication to our students. Your service makes a real and lasting difference, and we're grateful for all you do during School Board Recognition Week and throughout the year. So if you would join me in giving our school board a round of applause. You shared a little while ago about the different commitments and committees that you're a part of. Some of those are parent-teacher organizations, they have a really thoughtful practice of presenting gifts of thanks, tokens of thanks each year, and you should have found a bag on your seat when you came in. Those are from the PTOs that you represent as a symbol of thanks for the good work that you do for kids and our school community. So this School Board Recognition Week in October, thank you, thank you, thank you. The second item up under the superintendent's report is a public hearing regarding our district-wide safety plan. This is something that usually happens over the summer months, although this year, New York State was a little later than usual in terms of rolling out some changes that had to be made, so we adopted our safety plans for the start of the year and have had to go back and add some required information. So Dr. Grupka, I'm going to turn things over to you for a very quick intro, and then we'll pause to see if there are any questions or comments, and then we'll move along.
Thank you. So if you recall, on August eighteenth, we approved the district-wide and building-level safety plans, which needed to be in effect for September first. A few days before that, the state had added some requirements to add a cardiac arrest appendix to both the district and the building-level plans, which required us to repost the plan with the cardiac arrest appendix. It is on our website currently. It's open for a thirty-day comment. If there is any questions now, I'd be happy to take them. Otherwise, you're welcome to reach out to Dr. Frame or myself with any concerns, questions, or thoughts about the plan.
All right. Thanks, Dr. Grupka. I'm going to head down for the third report to the podium. This is the number four of four in our strategic planning updates, and we'll be focusing specifically on our school resource officer team. That's why we have so many armed and uniformed individuals in the back of the auditorium tonight. Just nervous standing at the podium with this crew behind me, especially you, Officer Ballow. If people have been joining us for school board meetings, you know that for the first four this year, we have tackled a specific part of our strategic plan. As a reminder, this is something that a large committee of about forty people meet to work on each spring. This year, we had looked at a lot of quantitative data, a lot of feedback data for our school community, and have four focus areas. A couple are new, a couple are modifications of what we've had in recent years, and we have introduced one of the four strategic planning areas at each meeting this fall, and then done a deeper dive within that strategic planning area. So I'm going to give some information on the strategic planning area, I'm going to turn things over to our school resource officer team, and then offer a couple very brief thoughts at the end. So if you reflect back on the previous three meetings, you'll know that so far, we've covered people-first, always as a strategic planning area. We've talked about progress with purpose in the area of the thoughtful integration of technology and artificial intelligence, and we've also discussed learning for a changing world, and within those three different areas, given a more specific presentation. The fourth area of our strategic plan is an enhanced version of what we've seen over the past three or four years, and it really focuses on safety or belonging. And as we worked with our survey data and we worked with our strategic planning committee, the group kept coming back to the concept of when we come to school, we need to be coming to buildings and classrooms and learning spaces that are places where kids and adults feel totally safe. And when you look back at our previous strategic plans, it really has focused on the first subcomponent, the security and preparedness, making sure that we have good safety teams and procedures. Dr. Grupka had just referenced our safety plan. We have members of our school resource officer team behind us. We engage constantly in professional development, we have active safety teams here in the district, and so that first part is really building on some of that work and anchored into the security and preparedness. As the group talked and reviewed survey information, it went further than that, in saying that when we come to the Clarence Central School District and we're in learning spaces, kids need to feel comfortable and they need to have different support when they may be struggling. So we recognized our family support center, we have counselors, psychologists, school social workers, we have training in the areas of mental health here at school, but the committee spoke loud and clear, saying we want to extend that and really press into this area, so that we're not just a place that is safe and secure, it's a place where we're supportive and connected with one another. And then a third area is really talking about inclusion and belonging, and making sure that we see people, that we're extending respect and care and dignity for all members of our school community. And the way that we've approached that over the past few years is through culturally responsive teaching and learning. So there's an instructional component, there is work that we do with our families to make sure that as a learning community, no matter what your background and beliefs, when you come to school, you are safe, seen, respected, and cared for. So that's the main priority area, with some of those action steps and focus components below it. What we're going to do tonight is really anchor into that first subcomponent of security and preparedness, and talk about our school resource officer team. And earlier, Ben was explaining to me how a clicker worked in terms of needing to go from red to green, and I sort of razzed him back, saying jeepers, and I just botched it, Ben. So thank you for that tutorial, as I try for the seventh time to advance the slide. So it is a pleasure to introduce the members of our school resource officer team. We have met a couple times working on this presentation, we also meet on a monthly basis to talk about different district-wide safety issues and some of the work that's going on in schools. I do just want to say that we've got a really, really talented team. I am excited as I watch this team work with one another and work with members of our building communities, and if you haven't had a chance to meet and interact with them after tonight's presentation, I think you'll share that excitement and that gratitude that there are people who report every day with one specific job, and that's to keep our kids and our staff safe. So thank you for all that you do, we're looking forward to your comments and presentation tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Frame. The first thing I'd like to do is introduce the members of our school resource officer team. Mike Ballow, I was a New York State Trooper for thirty years, this is my ninth year here working at the high school. Jill Kazino joined us last year, she is at Harris Hill and Ledgeview. Officer Dzerba retired last year, since, so we then put Officer Scott Peal at the middle school, he's retired sheriff's deputy and detective from the Erie County Sheriff's Department. And then also new this year is Rob Ellis, retired New York State Trooper, who is covering Sheridan Hill and Clarence Center on a daily basis. I might add that between the four of us, you have in excess of a hundred years of law enforcement experience here, and I think you'd be hard-pressed to find four more qualified individuals that are committed on a daily basis to keep all our buildings safe. This is working or it's not working? My assistant. Apparently, oh, you got it. To give you a little background, I began this conversation back in two thousand and sixteen, many conversations, in-person conversations with then-school board president Mary Ellen Kloss. We developed a program going forward to try to initiate getting this program going, and it commenced in two thousand and seventeen when I was hired as the first school resource officer. The next year, we hired Officer Dzerba for the middle school in two thousand and eighteen, and again, this was a joint effort between the town of Clarence, Pat Casilio, the town supervisor, and the town board, and the school board, and the school at that time to get this off the ground and get this moving forward. The program grew to two more officers that we now have last year and this year, so we have four of us covering these six buildings. And again, this expansion couldn't be, keep going forward without this continued support from you guys and from Pat Casilio and the town board members, so thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm going to discuss the roles and responsibilities of an SRO, which most of you are familiar with, but we'll review really quickly. So it's to promote school safety, which we do such as like we're going around the buildings, checking locked doors, looking for safety in different areas, and we respond to emergencies. That would be things is if a first aid comes up, a kid gets hurt on the playground, and even sometimes we'll go to a suspicious person, so there's quite a large role in that first part. Second, we build positive relationships with students, staff, and families. We do that throughout the day. We are constantly working with the teachers, talking in the hall, talking with the kids, but then it's also after-school hours, football games, open houses. Anytime we have a chance to interact, we try to take that opportunity to make it a positive interaction. We support law-related education. We do that by entering the classrooms at the high school level. We're going to go and teach a little bit more about law. Middle school, health classes, they can talk about drugs and alcohol, and at elementary level, we can talk about bike safety coming up, or even just some different things. Playground safety, I did last year, some different things such as that. We collaborate with school staff on safety planning drills and crisis response, we work with the principals, we create presentations, and sometimes we train the staff in different things, like our safety measures, we have to train them to be the best they can be for safety. And then last is for my section, is we address issues proactively. We review current safety, we're constantly reviewing what we currently have, and we're also looking for any improvements we can make moving forward.
Good evening, everybody. How are we today? The primary function of our SRO team is for the safety, security of our students, faculty, staff, and the school grounds. We achieve this through regular patrols, monitoring the cameras, and being visible throughout the day. Being visible allows us to engage with the students and staff, build relationships, as well as monitor the potential threats and concerns that may arise. Additionally, we check for vulnerable areas such as unsecured doors and blind spots not covered by the cameras. The team provides security for some after-school events, as mentioned before, such as the football games. In situations such as a lockdown, a fire, an injury, our team coordinates and cooperates with the first responders assisting them in any way necessary. This gives the occupants of the building a sense of safety within our schools. Additionally, we work and connect with local authorities for assistance with a threat assessment or to investigate suspicious activities. We actively participate and observe in safety drills, confirming they work consistently with the school safety plans in place. The team provides feedback to improve the existing plans. The team also provides safety training sessions, such as reviewing protocols with safety monitors and aids. By taking a proactive approach, we minimize future possibilities of concern. By working closely with the school staff, we create a team-based approach to create and support the needs of our students.
I'm back, I'm going to go over the informal counselor and mentor, this is very important to me as well as to everybody, because we're constantly trying to work with the students, the staff, and the family. So one thing is we have, you can assist in a checkout, check-in, checkout concept, something being worked on a little bit to maybe the kids that need a little bit more extra support, check in the morning, see how they go throughout the day in checkout, so we don't leave them hanging at midpoint, so it's something we're working on. We positively reinforce our safe student behaviors, we do that at all different levels of the buildings. I know for the elementary, we have paws we hand out, that they've put on stickers to receive rewards, we write up paws at Ledgeview for the good behaviors that we're trying to enforce. Safety teams, junior safety teams, to promote safety within the building, like making sure they're walking or being kind to others. We create opportunities for improved interactions with students, so that can be anything from we enter into the lunchrooms and interact with them when they're having their fun, or we go into PE classes, go out to the playground for the elementary levels to interact with them, because all those stages of learning, it's all different stages of learning that we can interact with that. Also, the upper levels, they have an open office concept, make the kids realize they can come in and talk, either at a private level or even with peers, and sometimes given snacks that actually bring them in, make them more comfortable to go there. We will assist students, staffs, and families navigating complex law-related situations. I've found that they will come to us on every level, such as staff may come to us if they have a legal concern, families will come to us, maybe they can't understand a legal document that has come across their life that they're unsure with, or even like sometimes with kids, driving issues, that they're going to Officer Ballow to deal with, like driving issues. So we use that history and the background we have to guide them with that. Also, we promote respectful, constructive interactions with law enforcement. We are really big about being a positive role model. If nothing else, we want to show the police are here to help anyone, adults or children.
Ladies and gentlemen, how you doing? Thanks for having us. We all share the common goal that we're here to teach, and we're here for the kids, and I think that's an important thing to remember. Most recently, I found myself doing a video on the Clarence News Weekly News Program regarding Halloween safety. It was pretty spontaneous and came off the top of my head, but it turned out pretty well, and I got the idea across. Much like in this very room, I gave a very impromptu threat assessment, threat safety, and why not to do it to the sixth graders.
sixth graders when I was asked last minute to do so. It is something that I enjoy doing. It is something that I think is important for them to see us in the roles that we are as people and as people that they can approach and people that they can talk to. We also like to... Mike does an annual thing every year. He does a parking safety course for student drivers. I believe there's one right back there who had to take it recently because I know she just got her license. And serving as classroom readers and relating, speaking on law enforcement topics is something that I enjoy doing. When invited to classrooms, I'll talk about whatever you want to. I mean, we will do school safety. We will do Halloween safety, bike safety, traffic safety, car safety, all that kind of stuff. But, any subject that we're, you know, welcome to talk to. I was in health classes, actually showing kids how to do handshakes recently because I was asked to do so, and I thought it was kind of a neat thing to do. Mr. Gallagher was nice enough to invite me in. High five Fridays, something that we organize for the sports teams. I think the young kids and the old kids enjoy it just as much, and they come in and just kind of greet each other, and I think it's a big thrill for the kids. So, here to educate and here to help, and thanks for having us.
I'm honorary law enforcement tonight. I get to do the last slide. And this one's really focused on, for this specific team at this point in time, moving forward in a couple of different priority areas. So, they talked in more detail about what an SRO does, and I just offered this comment that when law enforcement members retire, there's no shortage of opportunities. A lot of people go to work for private security firms. A lot of schools use private security firms. And there are times when people come into a school community, and they really are there to provide oversight at unstructured times or have an armed presence on school grounds. It's different here in Clarence because you're an educator as opposed to a safety expert, and you've got to be all in. So, when we're talking about this group of people, they don't show up as people who are just writing numbers on a timesheet. They're people who come in, and their primary focus is on keeping everybody safe, and they're looking for ways to keep us more safe. So, whether that's providing specific training to monitors, reorienting our camera system, reviewing our safety plans, in addition to all the education and counseling components, this group is all in, and they take ownership of students, staff, safety, and if just lucky, we're lucky to work with them and couldn't be more impressed. As we talk as a team and this group meets on a regular basis, really three different things come up as appropriate, things to focus on right now. One is to deepen relationships with staff and expand classroom interaction. So, this is sort of a fancy way of saying, "We want to find ways to get our school resource officers in classrooms, up in front of students with that education component in respectful ways." So, half of our team is brand-new. They're still making connections with teachers, with staff members, with students, and there's a recognition that that takes place over time, and once you get more comfortable and you understand who teaches what and what the curricular opportunities may be, by strengthening those relationships, it opens doors to invitations for classroom reading, for speaking on different topics, and delivering different curricular experiences. So, really deepening relationships, understanding how our community works in order to expand those classroom interactions. The second one is to engage in safety-related professional development. My guess is that when you talk with members of these teams, this team, they have cutting-edge training when it comes to what it means to be a member of law enforcement and to operate in this community. That changes and modifies in some ways when you come into a school environment. And so, for them, there's engaging in a lot of professional development on training that's related to how to be an effective school resource officer. They interact with Erie County. They interact with New York State Troopers. We just had a couple of members that drove out to Monroe County to participate in a training. They'll engage in different webinars that are offered from national organizations. They'll do trainings with the FBI and Homeland Security. So, part of it is saying, "We want to invest in our team so that they have that cutting-edge information as they make us as safe as possible." And the last one is a little bit more specific, but one that fits for some really appropriate and heartbreaking reasons here in Clarence. When we talk about safety and we talk about instructional opportunities, to have this group in some ways take the lead with some of our student leaders on developing bike safety presentations or learning experiences for our younger students. We know that we tragically lost a student this past summer. We almost lost a second. And as residents of Clarence, we know that during the spring and summer and fall months when we're out on the roads, too often, we see students that are on their bikes without helmets and not making safe decisions when they're in our community. And so, really asking this team to partner with student leaders, perhaps partner with a family support center to make sure that we are educating students about bike safety. We're providing access for things like bike helmets if students don't have them. We are participating to be good communicators with regard to PR and public awareness about this issue. This is one that matters deeply to each member of our school community. And we talked at the beginning about our SRO team as being a partnership with the town of Clarence. There's no group that believes more strongly in this than the town, and they have been very focused on the policies and the resources to make sure that our roads and paths are safe here in Clarence. So, that is a third focused priority that we're working on in addition to things that we had shared earlier in this presentation. So, we'd like to thank this group for being here tonight, for working every day to keep our school community safe, and I'll pause to see if you have questions for either myself or members of our SRO team.
I just love seeing the pictures and videos of the high-five Fridays. But, for people who might not understand, could you briefly explain what the high-five Fridays are?
Yeah, it does not have to be... Mostly, it's athletic teams. We have had other teams in the past. I know Mr. Meyer brought his... I can't think of the name of his group. We've had other groups. Basically, they go to the elementary schools, are there when the students arrive at around 7:45-ish, and greet the kids in the hallway or outside the building, depending on the weather, with high-fives as they come in. We'll have like the field hockey girls have raised their sticks so they're making like a triangle that the kids have to walk through. And the kids just, it just brightens up their day. I've had the kids go into the cafeteria, and I had an aide at Sheridan Hill last year who specifically said to me that, she said, "This is just wonderful." She said, "I am in here every day when these kids come in the cafeteria, they get dropped off," and she said, "The connections I see and the smiles I see from when you bring the kids in here like this is just, it makes an amazing difference." And the kid, the, our high school students that come in, they love it just as much because what they're doing, the kids that went to that building we're going into, they go around and see their old teachers. We bring them into the classrooms, tell them about Junior High coming up if they're in fourth grade, fifth grade, and it's just a, yeah, it's a great thing. And Sheridan Hill, we always use, we usually end up playing a game of fuzzball, dodgeball with the, whatever class is in there, second graders, and it's a big hit.
Keep up the good work. Thank you.
It's a great, it's a great thing, and I like to do it.
Good, good.
I actually have two quick questions, and Dr. Frame kind of touched on part of one of them, and I was going to ask about how you engage with your peers in learning, and talked a little bit about some of the formal activities. But, I'm just curious, is there an informal network or collaboration with neighboring districts as far as how the various districts approach SRO?
I guess I can answer that one.
You don't have to raise your hand, though.
I've worked as a school resource officer for the town of Alden for the last 10 years. So, on a daily basis, I have an interaction with the neighboring community. Other than that, I do have associates with them. We all do. I mean, it's a, you know, the two steps separated from Buffalo, New York works for police in one step because you always know someone. So, I know the Sweet Home High School. I'm also a volunteer firefighter, so I have associations with the fire departments through that. So, yes, it's definitely a collaborative thing, and if there's a better idea, I'm willing to listen to it if someone else comes up with it. So... Yeah, I will say, Kim Smith from the FBI, she's a community outreach coordinator for the FBI. She's not an agent. She's a civilian employee for the FBI. She's been doing this. She took it over from, I can't think of the gentleman's name. He retired a few years back, but Kim's been doing it now for about five years. And she sets up regular trainings, meetings. She gets information out to us anytime she has the chance to about upcoming webinars, seminars, the ones that Scott and Rob just went to in Rochester, came from her, the training that the FBI and Homeland Security put on. So, there is a, yeah, there's a collaboration there going on all the time.
Thank you. And I guess the other one, Dr. Frame or Dr. Grubka, there's a lot of comments made relative to the four of you ensuring, you know, buildings, our buildings are safe and secure and identifying areas for opportunity for improvement within, within the actual physical construct of the building or processes. We're coming up on budgeting time. I guess I'm curious, the opportunities to maybe further invest in the safety of our buildings, is that coming up through the building principals and their budgets, or is that going right into central office? How are we going to kind of understand some of the things that we have opportunities to improve upon?
Yeah, great question. Our district-wide safety team is the vehicle and structure that we've used as representation from each of our six buildings, and there's a back and forth between the district team and our building-level teams. So, we'll, we have and we will ask that members of our SRO participate in building-level teams, district-level teams, and are able to identify some of those recommendations. And actually, as the board has identified, the SRO team is a priority. They have as well when they rank, order different things. So, as we look at the past couple of years, everything from the strategic use of 3M film to panic buttons in buildings to enhanced trainings for individuals for enlarging our SRO team, those are all things that have come by way of our district-wide safety team to the board, and our building-level teams filter into that. So, we'll be asking this group to engage in addition to our monthly conversations.
I just want to say how grateful I am as a parent for all that you do. Not just for myself, but I've been trying to talk to a lot of other parents about all of the wonderful things that you do because a lot of people don't know and think of you just as, you know, guards. And what you do is so much more than that. You add such a really great presence to our buildings. I'm so glad we have four of you now, and I'm just really thankful.
I want to say thank you, and we appreciate that and the fact that by doing even this presentation and the fact that the more we get the word out and the more we can be around people and interacting, I think the more they're going to get to know we're more than just somebody standing at the door because they see us out and they see us interacting with the kids, and hopefully that makes that lasting impression. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. And Mr. Ballow, thank you for being on the ground level and helping us build this program. You guys are great.
All right, we'll offer them a quick round of applause. And last up is Avery Collins with our student representative update.
So, Dr. Frame already touched on this, but I would like to recognize our amazing board members. The Board of Education Appreciation, Appreciation Week was this past month from October 13th to the 17th. All of these board members work incredibly hard to make our school district work as efficiently as it does and put so much effort into making it seem easy. Thank you to the board. We all appreciate it. High school students celebrated the annual homecoming week in October. Starting off with a flag football game, there were spirit days, a pep rally, football game, and it ended off with a dance. High school students had a great time celebrating their school spirit with this fun-filled tradition. Five athletes and one coach were inducted into the Clarence Athletic Wall of Fame. These six people were successful players and coaches and contributed to their respective teams. All of these people were detrimental to the success of Clarence's athletic programs, and their legacies will be remembered. Congrats to Sophia Banafatemi, Victoria Keener, Viviana Hallam, and Julia Mu for making their way to the state championship in girls tennis. All players either came in first, second, or third place in their respective events and punched their ticket to the state championships. The individual championships are the 27th to the 29th, which is today and till Wednesday, happening at the Billie Jean Tennis Center in New York City. Congrats to these athletes, and we are all supporting you from back here in Clarence. The Academy of Visual and Performing Arts had an amazing time hearing from Dylan Gannish, a Clarence grad now working in New York on Broadway and on national tours for lighting and technical design. The high school students got to hear firsthand experience on what it's like working in the arts industry and had a great seminar. The Family Support Center held their second annual Headlamp Hike at the Clarence Nature Center. Families from around town gathered there to go on a walk where kids could trick-or-treat as well as enjoy crafts and learn about organizations in the community. This event is such a great way for kids to become immersed in the area they live and a great way for parents to learn about local organizations. The Family Support Center did such a great job with this event, and it is such a great tradition. Seventh graders at the middle school took part in the Walk for Water Project, which raises money for clean water projects in Uganda. Learning about the struggles many people in Uganda and other countries have to endure in order to have clean water, these students wanted to raise awareness and help those in Uganda have greater access to clean water through these projects. The annual fun run and carnival occurred this past month. Students from all elementary schools gathered at the high school for a fun run around the grounds. Although the weather was not ideal, all students had a blast afterwards at the carnival hosted by the Clarence Schools and Richmond Foundation. Thank you to all organizers for making this event fun for students and parents.
Thank you. Thanks, Avery. And that is it, Mr. Boglili, for reports tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Frame. Next is our public comment session. We have no public comment cards, so there will be no public comment. Moving on to finance, Dr. Grubka.
Thank you. Today, I will be asking for approval of the 26-27 budget calendar, approval of our external audit that was reviewed by the Finance Committee, as well as the Collective Action Plan associated with that, approval of community education stipends, approval of a nursing contract for substitute nurse staffing, approval of two transportation contracts, and a resolution to approve a detailed energy audit performed by Danforth during our RFP process. Danforth came out as the leading contractor for our energy performance contract for lighting.
Thank you, Dr. Grubka. Any questions on items F1 through F7? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve items F1 through F7.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Cindy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Personnel, Mr. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Bob Vili. P1 is a request for absence from one of our teachers. The actual end date of that absence will be June 30th rather than July 31st, as noted. Prior appointments, we just had a substitute this month. Appointments, we have all of our winter sports coaches as we're starting to get to the next season. P4 is information only. It's notification of a, of a tenure award. But then, P5 is this evening for an approval of a different teacher's tenure. P6 is a list of salary adjustments that teachers put in usually twice a year when they've added professional development or graduate credit hours to their salary. And P7 is the changes to the substitute list.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle. Any items, any questions on items P1 through P7? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve item P1, P2, P3, P5, P6, and P7.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Adrian. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Mr. Michelle, non-instructional.
P8 is just a change in the start date for one of our employees. We have seven resignations this evening, one bus driver, three buildings and grounds workers, two aides, and one clerk. P10 has two transfers and an increase in eight hours. The New York Helps classifications, right now, civil service in New York, has changed the competitive titles slowly. There is a collection of them. It's not just all of them. But during this time, someone would not have to take an exam. It's an effort for some, some of our employees that are sitting on a provisional list, waiting six months to two years to take an exam, to be able to have a full-time position. So, that will expire June 26th, but you'll be seeing probably each board meeting coming up, titles as they are added and for approval. Prior appointments this month, we have some substitutes and a summer tech person. Appointments, we have a part-time clerk, lifeguard, student tech monitors, and unified club aides. P13 are changes to the substitute list.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle. Any questions on items P8 through P13? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve items P8 through P13.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Tricia. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Cindy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. Ms. Shushka, special needs and student activities.
The committee on Special Education met for nine days and is requesting the approval of the recommended services for 32 students. The committee on Pre-School Special Education met for four days and is requesting the approval of the recommended services for five students.
Thank you, Ms. Shushka. Do I have any questions on items S1 and S2? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve items S1 and S2.
Can you make a motion, John?
Thank you, Dawn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tricia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we don't have any board development or policies tonight. In our packet, you'll see a schedule of upcoming meetings, upcoming events.